Good evening, welcome to Lenmore City Commission meeting for December 6, 2016. This evening we have seven items on the agenda, five of which is for study and two which will be a special session. So we'll begin with number one is to review the recreational vehicle parking.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you said, this topic is recreational vehicle parking. This is something that comes up every so often and we have had a request from a resident to bring this forward and the commission decided to bring this to a study session, so that's why we're hearing it. Currently, our regulations only allow people to park their RVs, which would include boats, campers, trailers, those types of things. They're only allowed to park those outside of their front or side yard setbacks, so closest to the house, for up to 72 hours per month. They can be parked in the rear yard with no time limit. In August, the commission reviewed this and had voted to increase that time period to 96 hours per month. That just hasn't been incorporated by ordinance yet and knowing that this was coming up, we decided to just kind of hold off and see how this was going. So really, we're just bringing it for your discussion to see if there's any changes that you want to make. I believe that the resident who had originally brought this up most recently is here. I did pull some regulations from surrounding cities in the area and just generally either RVs are not allowed to be parked in residential properties in the front or side yard or they're limited in the number that are allowed, if they are allowed. I didn't find any other cities that limit it based on a certain number of hours per month. And I will say that from an enforcement standpoint, that is rather difficult to enforce when it's a certain number of hours per month. So, yeah, the examples from other cities are in there and I can answer any questions you might have and if you wanted to hear from that resident as well.
The, Mr. Commissioner, do you have anything you want to say about it to start with?
I'd like, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
Personally, for the RVs and the boats, this is not talking about the sea dudes that's on a trailer. I would like to see an extended time period, like from March or April to October, for six months or a period, that they get set if they have to, because if they're not, they're paying storage fees on there. They're also paying taxes on it, they're paying license on it, they're paying insurance on it. So why do we want to burden the owners because they are in a position to own a RV? It seems to me like they're being punished and doing it. The ones on the north side of the street and the old part of Lenmore, now they have access to the backyard and side yard. You go into the new additions on the other side of Lenmore, they don't. And I think this is where you'll see a lot of them, especially around 20th Street, off of 20th and those green streets there, is quite a few people that own motorhomes there. And, you know, to get it and keep track on it or play the game of 72 hours and then move it real quick and then bring it back the next month, I think is a big hassle if the people don't leave. That's my opinion.
And I know that a lot of those places south, the homeowners associations have very specific rules that are, that will be enforced, but they would be independent of the city.
Right, that would take precedence over ours at home.
Well, I don't know. It's, on the other side of that too, you're not, you're saying for RVs and boats.
Yeah.
Okay. An RV is a very large vehicle and if you do not have a lot of yard and, and, and I, you know, you say you mentioned the northeast area, things are very tight and very compact there, that there, there is no side yard in a lot of them. So it is the backyard and they are allowed to park it in the backyard if there's a paved surface. But I don't agree and I know that the citizens that I've heard from too, it's when people do object is when it's in the front yard or the, or the side yard for an extended period of time, especially when they get complaints is when there's not a lot of space. They're ready to, they're looking to sell their house or something like that on the market or they just, they generally don't like it. But a lot of my complaints come when the realtor comes and says, "Well, what about that over there? You need to ask them to get rid of that because that's not helping the appearance of the neighborhood," type of thing. So if you have a recreational vehicle and a boat, you don't have those type of qualms in that, obviously, because that's, that's a fun thing for you to have. But if you're in a tighter space, and I live in an older area where there's no side yards, you know, it's, it's the back or the front and those are the options on that. For most people, it's, it's the back on that. So I don't know if it's really fair to generalize that and have that constantly there throughout the summer when you're also out there. That would be the view of my, sitting in my backyard, looking at someone's RV.
If they have an RV and they're planning on using it, it's going to be there more than 72 hours while they're getting it ready and then they leave on a trip.
And they come back, yeah.
They come back to set them up.
That's if they do that. You could, you could have it sitting there for two, three months or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I just, yeah, I-
But that's both of them having them sitting up north on our streets, we've got three or four of them sitting up north.
No, and I don't, I don't really, yeah, and I don't really like them, I don't like them on the street. I definitely don't like that and I, but if they, like I said, if there is a, they're still meeting the setbacks on the side of the street there and they can have it there as storage, as long as they meet that six-foot setback.
You mean on the side of the house?
On the side of the house.
Yeah, and that and tails putting a hard surface, parking area park is another expense. Why do we want to keep throwing expenses at these people that have RVs, which are mostly basically new ones? They cost more than the average house fee.
Yeah.
They're not, they're not walkers nor they, they run in slums. If it doesn't approach on the sidewalk, if it's long enough, they have a long enough drive, they put it in, they don't cover the sidewalk, they make it in passing, I don't see a problem with it.
I, for a lot of people, it's not very attractive to stare at that day in and day out in the front of their neighbor's yard. I mean-
Yeah, but if they don't own that ground, the people that own the RV own that ground. Now, where's their rights at?
I know. And I, I am, I, but that's, but, you know, but those were the majority of the complaints come in where they're staring at it for, you know, it's, I, I think there's a compromise for both and that's why I think for a limited amount of time, you know, give that occupant across the street a rest to look at it. It's not, it's not an easy, it's not, it's not an easy solution. It's the same thing as having yard art in your yard and stuff like that. It's a very personal thing, I understand that, you know, and, and it's not even like, it's an economics choice or anything like that. It's a lifetime's choice. You either like to camp in RV, not everybody does, but not everybody wants that constantly in, you know, across the street center. Those, that's, those are the calls that I get. And, and I tell you, the, when someone looks to sell their house and if a neighbor on the street has something like that, that, that's when we've got the most vigorous complaints on there.
Well, I'd like to hear from the resident here that brought this to force before, who
he got some other input, of course, but I think it's just so difficult to enforce, that 72-hour thing. If you look around, it's like I said before, when I looked at his house on Google, I saw, I saw these RVs in the neighbor's yards, you know, all that.
He's got a, he lives, everybody has an RV, needs to live in that neighborhood.
Well, I mean, that's the truth.
I know, yeah.
Obviously not being, not being enforced and I don't know, I noticed that some of these others talks about the numbers of vehicles, of those type of vehicles and doesn't, I don't really see anything that talks about the size of the vehicle, but-
Yeah.
You know, if it's blocking the view of the street, then, you know, that's an issue too. But I would really like to hear from him before we discuss it in further.
I was surprised about the number. How many people would have two RVs?
Two RVs.
I was surprised if people addressed the number of vehicles. How many people have two RVs?
A lot of people have one, I mean-
And a boat and something, you know, I'm just kidding, but yeah, you know, I was just like, yeah.
And a lot of them have two-door garages, so they have that.
And some have other trailers and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have anything else to say?
Yeah, after thinking about this since the last time it came through, I've always been the type of person that if we have laws in the books, they need to be enforced and if they can't, shouldn't be enforced, take them off the book. When it comes to enforcement, well, you're talking 46 hours, 72 hours, 96, that's, it's almost impossible to enforce it. It, it really is. Unless you have code enforcement there, clocking it, timing, it's, it's almost impossible to do that. So on that end of it, it has no teeth to enforce an hourly like that. Me being someone who's owned a boat and owned RV in the past, I tend to agree with the mayor on this where we should set a March 1st, April 1st, whatever, into the fall. And as long as nobody is living in the RV, because I think that's the main thing we're talking about, because to me, this thing is either put up going to be for aesthetic or for the purpose of people, stopping people from living in these things out in front of homes and all that. And so, as long as people aren't living in these things, I don't have a problem with them staying out in front of my personal property. And as far as the evaluation on property when people are selling homes and all that, I can understand that, but at the same time, an RV is something that's going to be moved once the owner moves out anyway. I mean, it's their home, they're selling it, they'll take the RV with them. So I, I agree with you, Mayor, on that. I think we should go with the summertime from spring to fall, let them park one RV, one boat, and as long as nobody is living in the RV during those months, I think we're fine.
Is the person that generated the study session-
Yes, sir.
Come on up and put the podium, let us know your name and your address and-
Yes, sir.
Tell us what's on your mind.
My name's Mike Pednars. I live, I live at 2410 South 24th Street, Lenmore, Kansas. I'm not as nervous today, so, but I want to give you guys, I did go around and I got a petition with a couple of recommendations to, to change it and you guys hit on a couple of my recommendations. One of them, and I've talked to, and to address the other commissioner, I don't know what her name is, Lisa, address Lisa's concerns, I've talked to a lot of big RV owners when I got these signatures and they were, had no problem, you know, signing this even though it didn't reply to the big, big, big RV owners. They still will store their stuff. Their biggest concern was, don't block the street, you know, because you've got kids in the neighborhood. So that all was a, you know, factor. But having said that, I mean, I only had two hours a night for one week and I got 52 signatures on there. Nobody denied to sign it and two of my options on that form was let the residents park their RV, small boats or trailers, less than 17 feet in length, about the size of a regular pickup truck or bigger, was one option, and to just let them park it in their driveway throughout the year. The other option was the same thing, same size restriction and everything, but from what you stated, April through October. So, and like I said, I, when I went around for signatures, not one person, you know, denied wanting to sign that. They-
For smaller ones, but not the huge, long recreational RVs?
Right. The, the code that I, that I put on there, the code stays exactly the same as you got it. You might want to take out the 72 hours because you can't really enforce that. That was a good point, because I don't know how somebody would tag somebody, how do you know if it was there for five hours, you know, when they came over? But minus the 72 hours piece, you would add in a size restriction that can be parked in the driveway per se, in the front. Everything else still applies to the back and the side. You can still keep that in there and just put a size restriction, because it's pretty, you know, 17 feet is about, about the size of a regular pickup truck or maybe a little bit bigger type, you know, you know, you may go 20 feet, because then the people with the pickup trucks with a little camper thing over the top would be eligible to park their cars in the, I mean, park it in the driveway too, you know, whether it's for that period of time or for just permanently, you know. So, but going around, and if I had more time, I probably could have got 1,000 signatures, but I only had two hours a night for one week, so, and that's, so hopefully you guys take a look at that, because it, I mean, everybody I've talked to, you know, especially with the little towing trailer stuff, them guys too, they use that daily, you know, and to have to, you know, 72 hours is just not realistic, so.
Well, I, and I, we had a trailer though, and we only plugged, and when we did for hauling antiques, so, and believe me, anybody who didn't like it called and said, "How long is that going to be out there?" So I've had to kind of deal with that type of thing too personally.
And, and I understand, but most of the people that I've talked to that complained before, they complained because somebody else got cited, they got cited and somebody else didn't. That's what it come down to.
Yeah, yeah.
It was, it was a matter of being, they complained because they weren't, they got cited and the person two doors down didn't. And that's why, that was more than a complaint.
And that is aggravating.
So.
Well, to add to what you were saying is you pretty well restricted the RVs by, say, 20 feet, and I agree with the synopsis of not blocking the sidewalk. However, if you have a driveway, you have enough setback on your house that you can handle a 40-foot motorhome-
Correct.
-which you can out south, then that should be legal.
And, and I agree. And I, as long as, you know, it doesn't interfere, I mean, the, the petition has options, you know, for you guys to, whatever comes best, but the bottom line is, I mean, you, you should be able to park, you know, smaller items that don't block anything in your driveway like that. And I, I, I mean, I've seen yard art, you mentioned, somebody mentioned yard art, you know? I mean, I mean, a covered, nice-looking boat in my driveway as opposed to a toilet in the front yard filled with potting soil and a plant is called yard art and it looks good. So, you know, call it what it is, but crazy some, some stuff, but my whole thing is, is I think you can tweak it. There was, these were just a couple of options that are on the code. I mean, it could be tweaked to, if it don't, just like you said, if it doesn't interfere with the, you know, because one resident did mention that, if you park it on the side of the street, he couldn't see the cars coming down with kids.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if it's in his driveway, you know, I know somebody, these, a lot of people in the area have huge driveways, I could fit four cargo vans in my driveway.
Well, yeah.
And you could still put it all the way up to the front and you could see easily.
And that's hard, because I, I've, you know, well, you have properties that they can barely fit the car there and then you've got someone that can probably have a used car lot right there on their own property because they have so much space, so.
So I, I think that could be tweaked in there, blocking and then the size or if you wanted to put a size, you don't have to put a size limit on it. That's a length limit, you know, I mean, and one of the options, there is, I think it was no size limit. Then my last resort was the timeframe, you know, so, but I would appreciate if you guys changed that to one of them options and we'd be happy, so.
Well, thank you for your input tonight. Again, it's just a study session. We'll all leave this information and will not be a decision made this evening.
Okay, all right.
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Does anyone else have any comments on it or?
No, when it comes to the size restriction, I understand, but again, we got people that have short driveways, long driveways and different sized RVs. I think the main point, as long as the RV being stored in the driveway is not interfering with the street or sidewalk, then I don't have a problem.
And then maybe, I would say safety sight distances too, because you don't want to be backing out of a driveway and you've got, you know, no sight distance. I, that's, I, I think I, a long ago, I remember somebody doing that and they actually got hit coming out and it was their own recreational vehicle that was blocking their view, so that's just, just weird, I know, just the gambit of stuff, so. But he even, in the petition, he said that there were some sight, you know, things too if the vehicle is really, really large during-
I think the simplest thing to do would be just to take out that 72 hours and if you were to leave in the restriction that it could not be within that setback, couldn't be within that front yard setback, so basically the first 25 feet or the side yard setback, so that first six feet, that would take care of any sight distance issues. To put a length restriction on an RV, that's going to be a little bit difficult to enforce too.
Right.
A little bit the same as the hours and-
That's true, yeah.
Yeah.
Whether, you know, is this an 18-foot trailer or 22-foot, you know, it's, that would be a little bit difficult. The, the setbacks are a little bit easier to judge since we have GIS mapping and we can tell pretty accurately where those setbacks would lie. So that, that would be one option that would, you know, take away that time restriction and, and still take care of the sight distance.
I think the other point of this is, at least my point is, if the person has ample room to store it in the car for that length of time, then we don't want to do anything to do, fully address.
Let me ask for one clarification. Originally, this was brought up for boating season. I'm not sure that there is an RV season. I think RV owner could make the, could make the case that RV season is 12 months a year if you go south for the winter. So if there is a consensus tonight, maybe a little direction on, are we going to do this pursuing an April to October timeframe or are we going to look at what kind of time restriction, considering the differences between those two?
I would still be in favor of the timeframe.
Whatever the commission chooses as far as that.
Because we do have ample lots in the city for long-term storage for the winter and if the people need them during the winter, they can still pull them up in there, load them and then go ahead and leave, so.
Going to see how the side restriction works, when they park on the side. What is a six-foot setback mean? A six-foot setback would be from your property line, that's, but yeah, the, I included a brochure from Gardner. I just liked their brochure, I thought that was a pretty good visual. Your side yard setback, it's six feet in most residential districts, so six feet in from your side property line, so from that six feet between that and your-
Oh, from the side. Okay, from the side. Is it from the front?
From the, from the front, it's generally 25 feet.
Okay.
So it would negate any RV parked on the side anyway because of the-
From the front, from the street.
In those larger lots, you know, there are a number of lots in town that have pretty deep side yards and a number that have, as you've mentioned, the pretty deep front yards. Another-
Others don't have that deeper front yard, that they put a side yard in as the house.
But they, they could have the side yard, you know, we could put some sort of other depth restriction on the front yard that it couldn't be within 10 feet of a curb or something like that if you didn't want to have that full 25 foot. So there, there's some options that we could look at.
Look at that, okay.
Is there consensus to have Julie draw up something where we can-
Did you want to speak?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll add up some options and-
I think we have enough.
Go for it.
You think you got enough to carry on? Okay.
I've got one more thing. I don't want to, I don't want you guys to push it back.
Can I come back up?
Smaller vehicles be in time.
Can you come back up to the podium?
Yeah, so we're all here.
I just don't want to get lost into the, in the, in the thing that, you know, the setback is fine in the back of the yard if you have room, but if you have smaller vehicles that can fit in the driveway, make sure that we, you know, they'd be able to do that too.
Right.
Okay? I just don't want that to get lost in, because we're, you're looking at the side and the setback in the back, because I'm looking at, a lot of people don't have that. They don't have something they could fit on the side.
No, but we're looking at the whole thing, we've got to look at the whole thing.
All right, I just, I'm just being sure, because, thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll share this one with you.
Okay, so is the consensus on one to have Julie and Paul work on that?
Yep.
Item number two is recreation program registration license. Steve?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner.
Good evening.
The issue is to review late charges as they pertain to our late registration, so late fees for registrations come in after the deadline. Currently, the way our operations are set up, we have a registration period for our, our sports programs, you know, basketball, youth baseball and such, they generally last for about a month. And then after that month, then we have a, a, a two-week stretch where you can still register your, your child to play, but we do charge a $25 late fee at that point. Reason we do that is to provide incentive to get registrations in, in a timely manner so that we can, so that we can go on with, with administering the program as far as setting teams and getting coaches and practices and ordering uniforms and all that kind of stuff. We used to in the past, after that two-week period, have a drop-dead deadline where at that point, nobody could register further. But if you recall it, at the city commission's direction last year, I believe it was during our budget discussions, we discussed to go ahead and have a second, we call it the late late fee, the late late period, a second registration fee that allows for individuals to come into the program at any point, clear up through the last game of whatever the season may be, just in case. We want to be as inclusive as possible. So just in case somebody moves to the area and comes into the middle season, something like that.
Is, is that one an additional $25?
Yes, yes.
So they have to pay $50?
So that's a $50 technical late fee then?
Right, right.
And even having-
There's no exceptions.
Even allowing somebody to register after a late fee is pretty unheard of. We just did it for the couple instances that had come up and it was a commissioner who didn't back that up.
Right, right. Most, most entities have a, a deadline.
Right. They have a drop-dead date.
And then they have a two weeks, yeah, like Lance-
One week.
Two weeks later, if, if you're not in by then, too bad, so sad. And we had the discussion, well, you know what, you know, what's, because there are extenuating circumstances, people move in and out of the community, kid has a broken arm, gets his cast off, you know. It gives them the option. Yes, it, it is more costly at that point, but it's more costly from an administrative point as well when we have to order more jerseys and you have to pay shipping on that, you know, on that alone and of course administrative time that goes into it. So that is, that is what we currently do. This comes before you tonight, we did have a concerned citizen bring it to you, so that's why we're at a study session and I believe she is here tonight. If you have any questions for myself, our sports program supervisor, Tabor Man deal is also here tonight. If you have any questions regarding the administration of the programs with that, if there's any discussion or any questions, I might be able to answer.
I've got a question for you, Steve. How would you feel, I realize that you have an additional two weeks to allow for the $25 fee before you go into the additional one, if, means this is a very transient community, if somebody moves to this area within one month of your cutoff date, you give them two weeks additional. I mean, it's, be highly unusual if somebody moved there in one day, run down to Parks and Rec and signed a kid up, if that's the cutoff date. But if we could give two weeks if they prove that they just moved to the area, to allow them to, without a fee, otherwise I think your fees are in line.
And is, is the fee arbitrary or are there actual costs that, that, that are incurred by Parks and Recs? That's, I can't remember that.
There are some additional costs. Like I said, when, when we order, like when we order uniforms, we order in bulk and they're cheaper in bulk, obviously. You also pay shipping one time when we have to order additional ones. Do they add up to $25? Probably not.
Okay.
The $25 is there more as an incentive to, to try and get everybody in in a timely manner so that we can go through the whole administrative portion of setting up teams, getting coaches, getting every, you know, for the skills test and get everything organized. It takes, takes quite a bit of-
In the last five years, how many late registrations have you had?
We get a handful every year, not a lot. I believe about four or five years ago, this late fee was increased to 25 and it was before, it was while I was still over in park maintenance, obviously. I believe there was five or $10 at that time and I believe the reason they changed it is because they had so many late registrations coming in. I was talking with Marcel Williams, our administrative assistant, earlier today about this and she said, "It's unbelievable the difference now as far as the," we still get some, you know, people, people miss dates, everybody misses dates, you know? It's easy to, you know, have things slip through the cracks. So it's, it's nice to have that we can still get them in, but it's nice to provide that incentive to get it in and to us in a timely manner also.
David, you want to come up?
If you don't mind, I'd like to address what you asked about the people coming in because of the transient. And actually what happens is more often than not, we get a phone call from somebody who's in Georgia who's being transferred here and say, "We'd like to register, we're not going to be coming in until..." I'll give you a specific example. We've got a person coming in from somewhere, they called way back when, I asked them if they would just send me a email that they'd be in such and such time. They're either going to be here the last week of December or the first week of January and I've got that on file and I guaranteed them that they would be able to pay the regular 45, or $40 fee as opposed to having to pay the 90. So I had that happen more often than I have people who come in and say, "Oh, by the way, we're here." So we address it that way, basically as-
Another way to look at it, and I'm not picking on either group, but I would foresee the military for the ones that email and do more than business committee, if people have just moved to the area.
And you know, in my five years, I've never had a civilian who's moved in and come in and asked if they could play basketball.
That's the point, right.
Yeah. So the people who it affects the most-
So I mean, I always hope to be fair to everybody.
Right, exactly.
As fair as we can.
Exactly.
Without law.
Yeah.
And I think, I don't know what the rest of the commission feels like, but I think that, that first two weeks, if, if they can prove that they just moved in, you know, let them, let them go, let the kids have fun, that's the whole idea of parking where it is.
Well, the late, late one, I think that's- Well, the late, late one, I think that's overboard. I really do, I really do. I, I think honestly, if you're not having like a chronic problem anymore, I really think that we should eliminate that.
Just reduce it to the initial $25?
Yeah, I mean, a late fee is a late fee. It's $25, you know, I mean, or I'd even be open to, you know, if you want to like, you know, you pay for the jersey and the shipping and, and you know, and because, so you know, because you've, you know, you're late and we didn't get in on our bulk ordering or whatever. But yeah, but, but two late fees is kind of crazy. At least one, that, that's, you know, or, you know, I could dial that back a little bit because it's really not, it's not just covering our costs or anything in the program. It's, you know, I, I, you know, I just would, you know, rather have any costs that were associated with or, you know, usually if you pay a late fee someplace, you don't really pay as much as you do to sign up for the program. It's usually about half or something like that anywhere else in, in the greater world on that, so, you know. And, you know, like a, you know, like a $10 late fee or a $15 late fee or something like that. I mean, you know, I mean, our goal is, you know, we don't make money on these programs. They are taxpayer-funded. They should be community-friendly, you know. I mean, and you don't want people chronically taking advantage of the situation. I can understand that. And, and if you needed to have it waived or something, if they could prove that they, you know, weren't here, I'd be flexible enough to say, you know, okay, you really want your kids into the program, you want here, if it's a, you know, a receipt of something utility or something like that, you know, it's.
Yeah, I, I agree with her makes them, you know, and I think you can make exceptions sometimes too. Everything doesn't have to be that much. But I, I don't.
And that's at your discretion. Yeah, 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 it's like.
Like, like Taylor said, if somebody contacts us, like they're, they're coming in and they contact us before the deadline, and we've had that with our scholarship program. They come in and it's the deadline, the day of, and they don't have the paperwork they need. Like, okay, well, you came in by the deadline, you know, so you showed good faith effort, so you're in by the deadline.
I know, and you gotta applaud the parent that does that. I would not be that organized, yeah.
I think the $25 from the original late fee is fine.
And then just have one, so unclear, and then that's just it, just one?
Yeah.
They go ahead, they go ahead and runs through the entire.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I, you know, it depends on what program there is to. There's also a point of where you're involved in the program, that it's just not advantageous for the kid or the program to get in so late that they can't. And that's your discretion to deal with that because it's whatever, you know, you know, whatever sport and stuff that, that they're, you know, the kids are involved in because there's always another opportunity somewhere to participate, yeah.
I have no problem with the late fee for people who are procrastinating it and just kick the can down the road, so to speak, and we know that we're all human and a lot of people do that. So, I have no problem with late fee being there. And I think what you've done as far as anybody moving in the town, showing proof they've just moved in town, waiving the wait fee, late fee, I think is a good idea. That's honestly, that's kind of the bottom line with that. I'd have no problem with the late fee if people are living here and just took the time and didn't do it, you know, there's a late fee to get in. It's that simple. But if they move to town, waiving the fee to help them out, I don't have a problem with that. I think it's a good system.
I need your name and your address.
Sure. Amy Phillips, 2926 Gerard Street in Leavenworth. Thank you so much on behalf of the parents for getting rid of the second week. That, that is truly a blessing to some of the families and being a military spouse, knowing that we move, that's fantastic. So, thank you for that. One of the things I wanted to talk about is the $25 late fee and Ms. Weekly had mentioned lowering even that. Do consider that Lansing, that was mentioned, they have a $10 late fee. They do have a drop date once October 31st comes. And I even have their paperwork. It's not black and white even then. They will take it on a case-by-case basis if your child can play basketball, but it's a $10 late fee. So, $25, $10, there really aren't any hard numbers to say that the $25 has greatly improved parents coming in and, and you know, we, I think Steve mentioned they had two cases in the last, oh, maybe five years. I don't exactly remember what your numbers were. But you don't have a whole lot of people coming in late, so why $25? Why can't we be like our sister city?
Steve said, I think he was mentioning the super late fee.
Super late fee.
We, we did go to 25 because we were at 10 and it was a problem. It wasn't, it wasn't an increase, just an increase. It was an increase because there was a problem. And I can't speak to Lansing's program, what problems they have or don't have, but there's a pretty good incentive in Lansing because if you don't get in that late fee, then you don't get in at all.
There's a cutoff date, right.
Right, which is something we could do too. I mean, $10 and, and an absolute date. The other thing that we don't have is we don't have an option to pay online. There's a lot of parents that.
And we are working on.
Well, that's fantastic. I mean, you know, to pay online, you may not have the $25 late fee at all because parents who work till 5:00, 6:00 o'clock at night, they can't run down to pay in person. So, if you set up a way to make it easier where I can sit at home after work and click on my computer and pay, then we might not even have to have this discussion. The late fee would be a moot point. Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, we're heading that way. That's, we can't wait either.
We can't either. You know, I mean, you know, we all, we all have busy lives and, but does $25 have to be the penalty for having a busy life? I mean, $10, $15 and an absolute deadline?
The commission voted not to have an absolute deadline, so you would have to go back on something.
Right.
You just did.
Right.
Sure, sure. But please, please consider the $25 as being something that is a burden to parents and because we don't have the, the option to pay online yet, I just, I think that's an unfair price. There should be a late fee, absolutely. I think we all are in agreement on that. But why can't we be like similar cities like Lansing who only charges 10 or Wyandotte County, they don't charge any at all. And I understand that their demographics are different in that county, but you know, you have parents here that $40 is, that's what I can pay. And I, sorry, I didn't have a chance to get down there on time. Absolutely. I just want you to consider all, all of this before you say, you know, no, $25 is the fee that it's going to be. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have anything else on this subject?
Can I say one more thing? Just as an example, since we did away with a drop-dead deadline, this year in basketball, we've already been practicing for a week. In that one week period, I had a parent come in and register their child, so I have to order their shirt then. We've already started practices, so the kid is put into a team light. The very next day after I already ordered another shirt, another kid came in and these were a lot more kids.
Right.
Had to go and order a shirt. Today, another child came in and paid, so I had to put in a third order of an individual shirt, which we have to pay full price of the shirt, full price for the printing and the shipping three individual times in less than a week because I have no way, I can't wait so that I can get the shirt to the child.
Yeah, you don't know if anybody else is coming.
And I don't know if anybody else is coming.
Right, right.
So, that was the purpose when the commission decided to have no drop-dead date, the commission also said, go ahead and put another late fee on it at that time.
Right.
So, that's the history of it and that's the why and that's an example this week of why we did that.
Yeah, but I'm also thinking if you're the household too that has more than one kid, you know, to, that gets to be quite, it's, it's prohibitive also then to even participate too if you've got more than one kid. I mean, you're paying right now currently just $90. You have multiply that by more than one child too, that's, that gets to be excessive. I, I know you're trying to, you know, get rid of the abuse of the system there too, but, but yeah, I, like I said, I'm, I just, I think the late, late fee, I, that's, to me, that's, that's just too much still, you know, to do that.
Instead of the late fee, well, you just make it mandatory that if they come in and register late, that they have to pay for the cost of having that shirt printed.
Yeah.
And postage and ship.
And I'm going to tell you, $25 is pretty close to it because our shirt, in our bulk rate, our shirts are $14.
Right, but I understand it doing ones use lower bulk rate.
Well, but that was what the $25 was covering was for that because then you have the shipping and I don't know what shipping is, but we're close to $20.
Well, I did, that's why, because I even asked that. I said, I said, is it covering any costs of the program? So, your $25 is, is almost covering the shirt and the shipping?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, then that, yeah, that should at least be what the late fee entails then is you're paying for the cost of the shirt, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Well, just give you a little time to maybe put something together and work the ball.
Okay, just for clarification on the one month that you spoke of, Mayor, that's one month of moving within our, the registration deadline date? Is that what we're looking at?
Well, I say their deadline is the 10th and they moved here at the last of the month.
Okay.
So, they already got two weeks into it, but they hypothetically have been busy settling their home, then that second two weeks is what was reported.
We even go beyond, to be honest with you, and Steve probably doesn't know this, but we even go beyond that. I mean, if a person shows that they just moved in, I mean, why are we going to charge them a late, what are they late for? I mean, they're not late, they just got here.
Right.
So, how are they late? I mean, that's the way we've kind of looked at it is they're not late because they just got here and we go back to, and like I said, I use the example of the military person that's coming in.
Sure, sure.
In the last part of December, 1st of January, and we told them, you know, we'd even got a shirt ordered for the child because we know that.
If that's the case, then we wouldn't have any complaints here, right?
What's that?
You're just saying right now that you're not, you're not charging a late fee if they
Because I'm not having to, I'm not, I can order it in the bulk rate.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, I'm ordering it with the group, so it's already ordered for the person.
Got it, okay.
We're something up.
Yep, okay. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three is to review the code of ordinances for Chapter 18 animals. Harlan Fisher.
Yes, sir. Okay, this is a review of Chapter 18, which covers animals. There's a couple of things in this chapter that we want to go over. I'll go over the first couple and I'll give it to Chief Kitchens to go over the last item. The first two, the first one covers adoptions of animals and this really is kind of a housekeeping of a change that was made last year to the ordinance and not all of the changes that we intended to make got, got made. So, in looking at it was kind of, we came across that during the course of the year and it was one of the things that we were going to clean up. So, the first item is on the attachments. There's a, there's a sentence under Section 18-7A3 and the second sentence of that should have been eliminated, which says there's a penalty or violation of $25 for an animal or bird surrendered to that animal shelter and that should have been removed. So, I'm just asking that, go ahead and, you know, when this comes back on ordinance, that we should remove that because that was intended with last year's. The other thing on this section is we would like to add the provision for the police chief or the city manager to waive adoption fees as they seem, as they deem necessary. And I think one of the situations this past year is we had a, an overabundance of cats, was that? And we wanted to be able to give those.
Some of the private entities are, are allowed to do that, but they have a big push for adoptions. They say, hey, come in and, and so I guess it's in, in an effort to be a little more competitive, where we just want the opportunity once and allowed to incentivize coming down for options, so.
Good.
So, we would ask that when this comes back, we would add that, that section there. The next one is on kennels and again, this is one of those things where as we read the, the ordinance, it doesn't really clearly state the purpose of it. It doesn't define what a commercial kennel is and what a residential kennel is. I guess some years back, we kind of got away from the city regulating commercial kennels and we've left that to the state to license them, to inspect them and that type of thing. So, our ordinance doesn't really separate those two very well, so we just kind of went through and cleaned up the, put in some stuff that would clean that up and would clarify that a little bit more. We put in the definition of what a commercial kennel is and then throughout the ordinance, we put in whether that particular section was talking about a commercial kennel or a residential kennel. So, basically those things would just clarify that if it is a residential kennel, which is anybody that has more than four animals and there's some combinations of cats and dogs, that animal control, the city would license those, would inspect them and take care of that. And then on the commercial side, commercial kennel, then those would be permitted by the state. So, those two things, we, we just want to kind of clarify. And then there's some other parts of it as far as the fees that I'll talk about when we get to that.
I have a question. When in red, you put in here the definition of a commercial kennel. It almost reads the same as a residential kennel.
The difference is, Commissioner Weekly, let's compare Roverwood Ranch, which is a business, an open-up business. You have to be zoned appropriately for that. And so, that's essentially what the difference should be and that was our effort to reflect that. Now, those are businesses and you have to be zoned appropriately. We wouldn't want one of those opened up and presidential.
Okay, okay.
Versus a, a person who might breed dogs and may have big dogs for a period of time or sold off or, or that sort of thing. Those are allowable, but that's what we made an effort to sort of differentiate.
And that's a residential, that comes under residential kennel.
Correct.
Okay, okay. Just, yeah, I was just, yeah, okay, just, all right, wanted to make sense. Because, yeah, in the commercial, it doesn't, well, it doesn't really state anything in there about zoning or anything, but that's covered in some, I just answered my question, never mind. Sorry about that, guys. Yeah, sorry, sorry, yeah. Okay, all right, no, good, okay.
The next big effort, folks, is domestic foul. The animal control staff, our supervisor is reporting to me that over the course of probably the last year or so, we have been, you know, getting a growing number of residents in the city that have chickens that produce eggs. There's a number, we've gotten sort of two different complaints. They call, folks call and say, hey, what are the rules about chickens? We'd like to get chickens and we'd like to start down that road and what are the rules? And then we get the opposite of that. Hey, what's the rules on chickens? How many are you supposed to have and what's the number and that sort of thing? Right now, there is no number on whether you can do that. There's a couple of rules. One, if you have them in your residential neighborhood, you're required to have at least 75 feet from the coop, if you will, to the neighbor's yard. And then also, in addition to that, we've gotten a few complaints and a growing number of complaints about roosters. Roosters do what they do at somewhere around 4:00, 4:30, 5 o'clock in the morning, they wake up everybody in the surrounding neighborhood, whether it's Saturday morning or not. And so, we've started to get a little bit of, a little bit of concern about that from our community. So, essentially, my question to you tonight is very simple. Would you like us to consider imposing some sort of number on chickens? We looked around in the community, most cities allow it and still allow you to have chickens in the city, but they do, you know, some anywhere from 6 to 10. I'm not sure that we would want somebody in the city, let alone the own 50. I guess they could or not, you know, unless you, you want us to do that, that's fine.
No. Yeah, really.
Exactly.
In any event, if you have whatever authority you would like to impose, whatever number you think is running.
I don't think they should be running at large. This summer, I almost ran over a chicken.
Right.
Picking up my dog.
We, we do occasionally have that, but we sort of deal with that on a case-by-case basis. But anyway, it is kind of a growing issue. We're starting to get the less client animal control supervisor thinks there's about 25 or so houses that we know of that have chickens and there's no, and again, there's no number. Um, and again, there's no number, and so whatever you might.
Out of those twenty-five that you know of that have chickens, what do you think is, uh, the count is the biggest one?
Uh, I would say there's some that have more than ten. Um, and that, that is a number that kind of just jumps out at me that might seem to be reasonable, I don't want to.
I'd like to see what other cities do.
Yeah, cause this, where I ran over this chicken, it was a really small yard and, and, and it, you know, was in the alley.
Right.
Like I said, and I was like, and, and it was the rooster, so I mean, it's just, kind of think of it now, yeah. That could have been really bad. Um, but this, this was a really small yard and, and I, I saw two others. So ten for that size of a yard would really be a bad smell downwind when the summer hit there a little, little more, so. Yeah, I, I need more information.
They do make good fertilizer.
They do, yeah, but until, yeah, as long as the wind's not in that direction, yeah.
There is, there is language in the ordinance that requires cleanliness and.
Right.
Yeah.
We do have that.
Okay.
And there is the seventy-five foot removal, there just isn't a number.
Right.
So I suppose the question is, or what I would look for relative to that is, is there consensus to move forward to try and identify what a good number would be?
Yes.
You can come up with what other cities do.
I, I don't know, I have relatives that, that have raised chickens and roosters and all sorts of things like that. And I'm not sure, I know around the nation, but here in Leavenworth, I believe a hen laying chicken can probably lay an egg about once every two to three days. So if you're looking at a family that wants a couple dozen of eggs to go through a week without ever going to the store and all that. Uh, for going through the count we're going through now, I would say ten would, to me, off the cuff, you know, without further study, I would say ten would be a decent limit for inside the city because with ten chickens, you should be able to produce over, well over a dozen to two dozen eggs a week, which again, if you're a family of two, three, four people, that should be, keep you from having to go to the store. As far as the roosters, I can hear about the rooster noise, I really do, but again, uh, for those. Well, not only that, but if you think you've got a problem with, with chickens running out of the yard now, take the rooster out of the hen house and see how far those chickens run. Because the roosters keep them there, they, they, they go back dependent night with the rooster being there for protection as well as, you know, uh, their housing. So without the rooster, you're going to have more chickens running at large if you remove that, so. Um, unless of course you got a fenced in yard, you know, but then again, chickens are going to go over the fence, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that I can go with one rooster, right.
Yeah, you, we limit the square feet of so many dogs like that, why wouldn't you do the same thing for chickens on that, so.
So over the course of maybe the next two weeks before we bring this back, I'll send you some information, I'll email that to you and get that to you.
Okay.
So you can kind of get a sense from what other communities are doing. And then we took a, a sort of brief look and, um, most do allow it, there are some caps and they're pretty all over the place, but I'll get that to you soon.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you required to have a chicken coop?
Not exactly, you're required to have some mechanism by which you contain them, but I don't think you're required to have a coop. Did we bring that ordinance, or, uh, correct?
Yeah, cause I was just like, it said all, it says all pens, yards and barns, but, but this little house that I went by, it's not exactly room for a barn out there.
I don't think the ordinance says anything, it just says that they can't run at large and they, and then it talks about whatever contains them, how close it can be to another structure.
Right.
But they should have a.
Have a coop, but it does kind of insinuate that they have to be on some kind of fence area, yeah.
Well, I mean, if I only own one or two chickens, I don't need a huge coop, I can, you know, incorporate a dog house and rebuild it for that purpose, so, yeah.
Thank you, sir, I'll get that to you.
Ah, these and chickens, it's an interesting. Yeah, you can't, it, it does address it, but you can't have it, yeah.
Mike and Mike.
Yeah, cause somebody had a goat one time.
All right.
All right.
All right, I have, um.
Yeah, two minutes.
Go.
As you know, we've been, been talking for, uh, some time, uh, about, uh, stormwater, well, and how we manage it in the city of Leavenworth. And as a result of the EPA inspection a few years ago, we started about a year and a half ago with a, uh, permit process for what we're calling land disturbance permits, where if you're building something or disturbing the earth or, uh, doing any sort of thing that might cause erosion, you're required to obtain a permit, uh, prevent erosion, uh, keep some records and such. And we established the program about a year and a half ago. There was no fee associated with that. And we've worked with the developers and the contractors and such to see, uh, how our permitting process can be improved and, uh, information exchanged. And, uh, we thought it was a time probably to, uh, bring it to the commission with some recommendations for a more formal structure than we've had. Uh, we had a meeting with, uh, pretty much everyone, we sent notice to pretty much everyone that might have got a permit in that time period to come talk to us, uh, informally, uh, here in, in the commission room about what they thought of the program. And informed them of some of the changes we'll talk about here this evening and if they had any comments, questions or concerns. And we had maybe twenty people here and really there was no, uh, comments, concerns or questions, which I don't know how that could possibly happen, but, but it did.
You just made a very good point.
I, I'm assuming that was.
Lot of information.
So, uh, Mike Hooper's worked, uh, very closely with, uh, Hal Burdette, uh, Chief Building Inspector, to kind of develop, uh, the process of procedures. Uh, we kind of have two things that get looked at. One is the street right away, public works side of things, and the other is kind of managed by the building inspectors or their building houses or that sort of thing. So it's the same set of regulations. And Mike's put together, uh, what you have here this evening, uh, which is kind of the draft ordinances. And there's some things we still need to change on, on as we go along. But basically, uh, it kind of outlines what are the activities that require a permit? What are the requirements for submitting an application? And honestly, most applications, we work with the contractor and filling it out in the office. We can print a picture off of the aerial photos and they can draw and mark what it is, we don't, we don't believe it's onerous. Uh, inspection, uh, requirements, what do you have to do as a permit holder? Basically, it's the federal and state guidelines, which is essentially the federal and state rules, that you have to inspect your erosion control once a week and make a record that you in fact inspected it. And we're bound to inspect it periodically as well and check that you have records and say that you inspected it. So it just talks a little bit about that and it creates a, a fee structure and a penalty structure. The fee structure, uh, another wrinkle in here is if it's a one acre or a larger site, there's a state permit that's required. It's called a notice intent to discharge construction water, you know, somewhere in the state of Kansas. And there is a much more complex series of requirements that go with that, that we work with people that are required to get those to make sure their requirements meet our needs. Most contractors, engineers and such know how to, how to do that. On the smaller permits, uh, it's proposed that, uh, up to, uh, single family, single family homes, there would not be a fee required for that. There's, they're, uh, they're proposing that there would be a bonding requirement related to cleaning up the mud and that sort of thing. But there's no actual permit fee of, of, say, a hundred and fifty dollars or something like that for a stormwater permit fee. And I think that covers most of the folks that come in and they're, uh, they're building a individual house or adding a garage on somewhere. Uh, if they take basic erosion control measures, they take our picture, we draw a plan and say, this is straw hay bales and this is erosion control fence and it'll protect the gutter from mud and it solves ninety percent of those problems. The larger developments, we're wanting to put a fee on there, cause we do have, uh, responsibilities and we do have problems. Take the St. Mary College project, that was a tough one for them to keep up with and a tough one for us to monitor. They kind of had most of it right, but the part that wasn't right during the time of the rain that year, it was just mud from one end of East Road to the other. And we want some teeth in the ordinance, we spent a lot of time working with them. So we've created, and it's, uh, a permit fee for those large projects as well as penalties. Ultimately, it's, uh, the ordinance as it's structured allows the city to go take care of the problem and build, build them back. Uh, it allows us to, uh, notify them, you've got to fix it within forty-eight hours. However, at this part, we got to fix it within four hours, otherwise we will, or we can take emergency action, that sort of thing.
Yeah, it's like if there's mud flowing in front of someone's driveway or something, I know we've had cases like that with construction next door and, yeah.
Yeah, and it has been a problem, uh, not so much lately, I think people kind of get in the hang of what our expectations are. But, uh, Mike has worked, uh, long and hard to put together this, uh, this draft, uh, set of ordinances and the fee structure that goes with it. On page eighteen of the agenda, it kind of talks about the, uh, the fee structure. If you were disturbing something of an acre or larger, our, uh, minimum fee is a hundred and fifty dollars for us to issue you a permit. And if you're going on, uh, uh, five houses or more, it's two hundred and fifty dollars. And for like a large subdivision under a single, uh, single developer, like, uh, Shannon Doyle would have been, uh, most of those homes were built by the, uh, by the same, the same group of people. And they could, just got one permit to deal with it all. Another thing that we found was utility companies often procure, uh, a statewide permit. They will, and they have all their paperwork in order and we were for a time making them, every time they wanted to do anything, they had to do a certain level of paperwork. We thought, um, that's actually pretty silly. And so we are creating, uh, if, if they can bring them a statewide permit and agree to abide by the rules, that, uh, we would not assess them a permit fee for pretty much any of their work that falls into that one hundred square foot area or which is like ninety-nine percent of the things that they do for a big gas company or a, uh, blackberry company. They do small things, unless, unless it's a really big thing, in which case they'd have to get a separate permit. Uh, we, the bonding is outlined in here, um, and it is proposed if you are a single family home, that you would have a, um, I think it was twenty, post a twenty-five hundred dollar bond for, uh, potential, uh, mud, uh, mud costs. Uh, that is not a, that's not a permit fee, that is, as a bond can cover, uh, whatever you want to cover, work it out with the bonding company. And, uh, and there's some other language in here about, uh, who's considered a responsible party. Uh, basically, uh, sending notices from the homeowner on down to the contractors, considering notification of people that should be in a position to be responsible. So this is the draft ordinance, there's a couple of wonky paragraphs in here where I think if you were going to, if you're going to build a garden shed, you have to have a erosion control prepared by engineer. Uh, that's not appropriate for that section, we're, we're going to fix that. And we tried to, I tried to make it simple, but when you start condensing things, you kind of lose track of where it came from.
And Mike had the real story, of course.
Certainly, sir.
What about the garden?
Garden. Um, I've, I've just kind of. I think it's agriculture. Interestingly enough, uh, agriculture is totally exempt from our regulations unless they are posing a direct threat to the water.
I believe so.
So.
Another question I've got, you're just referencing the single family residence. Is the fees higher for duplex, fourplex, sixplex?
They would actually be the same.
The same.
Yeah, one duplex building would be considered a single family. That too, two to. Two to, two to five single family residences was a permit fee of one hundred and fifty dollars for that group and then two fifty for more than five. The fee structure is shown on page twenty-nine, uh, and the next agenda item is adopting and talking about the fee structure. This would be the structure that we're proposing to be adopted.
Can I mention it again?
This, uh, we did kind of look at the, the ordinances of about five other cities, compared what we're proposing, which is actually less than what the other cities have in place currently. Uh, as far as permit fees and what was bonding, uh, so I think we're re-catering our residents and our residents in there.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
That's a good job.
No, it looks, looks pretty good.
This was definitely something the EPA wanted to see, a formalization of the program, so I'm glad we got that done, but they'll be very happy if they make sure.
I know, I think everybody's following the rules pretty good, cause they didn't, it's going on.
Yeah.
They just got the, uh, the fence up or straw nails or this new two D. It's still a straw, it's like.
Took a little work in the beginning staying on them and reminding them that.
And I noticed your head's got down, the mud on it pretty thick.
It really has, and it's been a pretty impressive shift by, uh, people. I thought it would be a more difficult transition than it was and I was very happy, people taking the service.
Good.
Thanks, guys, there.
Thank you.
We'll move on to number five, which is review the annual permit.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is the annual review of Appendix F, which is the, um, fees for the city. Um, the code does require that we, uh, look at that at least once a year to see if there's anything. Um, staff isn't proposing any changes to current fees, it's just the ones that we're padding for the land disturbance and then those ones that are just those administrative things that we needed to make some changes to. So, um, the first change and, um, it's page two of the fee schedule. Um, it would just be to strike, it shouldn't say adoption service fee, it should say, um, I'm sorry, yeah, it should say animal surrender fee. And so there's just changing some wording on there that wasn't quite right. Um, on the next page, um, the empowerment charges, dog running at large and a cash bond. Again, that was one of those things last year that we, um, removed the cash bond or the deposit that somebody put down, they adopted a dog. And we just, um, overlooked getting that taken out of there. The next item down there is just putting the word residential kennel permit, since that's the only kind of permit that we, um, we issue here in the city. And I'm sorry, I forgot, I missed the one at the top of the page. Again, um, the adoption fees are the costs that are incurred by the city. Um, animal control does a, a contract with, um, vet services and stuff like that. So whatever the cost of, um, uh, those fees incurred for that animal is what the person pays, it's not a per strait fee. Um, and then on page eight of the fee schedule, um, and looking, going through and looking at some of these, um, I noticed that the alarm company, uh, late installation notification fee, it was listed as thirty-five dollars. And in the, within the code itself, most of the time it says, reference the, um, Appendix F. This one actually says within the code, it's twenty-five dollars. And I couldn't find where that was ever changed. Um, so I think the proper thing to do is go with the twenty-five, cause I couldn't see where it ever came to. The city commission was raised to thirty-five dollars. So since there was a conflict between the two, I think the twenty-five is probably the appropriate amount that we should have in there. And then, um, adding the fees for the land disturbance that Mike and Mike discussed. So those are the only things that staff would propose. Um, I don't know if the commission had a chance to look at the other fees and if there were any others that they had concerns about that they thought may, may need to be changed.
Anybody have any comments or concerns about the rising fees?
Just come back as an ordinance standing.
Moving on, we may have a need for a special meeting, a new motion, please.
So move, second.
Have a motion and second, if you can vote with Commissioner Ray.
Aye.
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 We are in special meeting. Uh, this would be the appointment to Leavenworth County Port Authority.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, um, yesterday, the Leavenworth County Commission unanimously voted to reappoint Teresa Commerford to a new term commencing January first, twenty seventeen, to the Port Authority and to appoint Bob Patswald to fill the unexpired term of Terry Andrews, who has resigned for the board, um, to Leavenworth County Port Authority. How this works is either body can approve, but then the other body has to confirm. So, uh, tonight before you is, um, to vote to confirm the county unit, so you're reappointing Teresa Commerford, uh, for a full four-year term and to appoint Bob Patswald to fill the unexpired term of Terry Andrews.
Terry spent quite a few years on the board, I think he needs to be compensated.
He is, and we're going to definitely work on, uh, making sure that he is properly thanked for his service to the board. He is, I think, uh, since, I think the early seventies, he was, he's, uh, been on the board, so.
Does any objections to the, to the, uh, is there a motion?
Uh, we move, uh, that we appoint Teresa Commerford, re, reappoint her to. We move that we appoint Teresa Commerford, reappoint her to the Port Authority Board and to appoint Robert Patswald to the, to replace Terry Andrews.
Second.
Do we have a motion in the second? Again, with Commissioner Hooper.
Aye.
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 That passes four to zero. Okay, our next is Resolution B twenty-one fifty-five. That's authorizing the public sale of taxable general improvement bonds.
Okay, this is the resolution for the public sale of the taxable general obligation bond series twenty seventeen A for the industrial park project. On September thirteenth, the city commission adopted Home Rule Ordinance Number eight zero one one, authorizing issuance of general obligation bonds in the maximum principal amount of five million dollars to finance the city's share of the estimated cost of the industrial park. And then on November twenty-second, the inter-local agreement was approved between the city commission, the Leavenworth County, and Leavenworth County Port Authority. The cost share to the city and the county was split fifty-fifty at a share, a cost for each for four million eight hundred and twenty-one thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents. The city's portion will be financed through the issuance of these bonds, twenty seventeen A, in an estimated amount of four million nine hundred and ten thousand dollars. That includes any issuance costs and interest on those. They will be dated February first, twenty seventeen, and they'll have a nineteen-year maturity date on them. The public sale of the bonds will take place on Tuesday, January tenth, at eleven o'clock Central Time. And we will, per the ordinance, or I'm sorry, resolution, put the notice as required and published in the Leavenworth Times and the Kansas Register. The principal interest on the bonds would be paid from the countywide sales tax fund as proposed in the CIP. And the first payment would be due in twenty eighteen. So, this resolution is just setting the date and it's just kind of one of the, it's the second step in it. And then we'll have the ordinance at the time that the bonds are issued, you know, we'll come back to for approval of that.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioner?
No.
Is there a motion?
I move that we improve Resolution B twenty-one fifty-five, authorizing the public sale of the taxable general obligation bond series twenty seventeen dash A for the industrial park.
I'm sorry, second.
We have a motion in second. Again, voting commission ready?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That passes four to zero. Our motion, please, I would like.
Second.
Again, voting Commissioner Hooper?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.